Mr. Martinez, can I be ready? You can start the meeting. Thank you very much. Board members, we have started the broadcast of our meeting over Zoom. As a reminder, for the last couple of meetings, your microphones are all turned off. When you are ready to use them, please turn them on and bring them. Close your mouth when you're speaking. That will help very much with picking up the sound on the microphone and broadcast through Zoom. Ms. Martinez, do we have people logging in through the... We do. Mr. Kizmarski, we're ready to begin whenever you are.
All right. Thank you so much. This meeting of the Maua Board of Education is open to members of the public who are physically present. Members of the public that are present will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Initially, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only, and anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 897-2657-9105, and the required password is 411030. We'll call Mr. Pender.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Saco.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
And Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
An adequate notice of agenda at this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Maua Board of Education will meet on October 27, 2021, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Board. Please rise for a salute of five. Mr. Gallo, two weeks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll be moving the executive session, close session to the end of the meeting. And with that, we'll move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on the new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one or remarks no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Please have a motion of the meeting in public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Gallo. We are open to the public for agenda questions. I would say, done. Can I please have a motion to close the meeting in public? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Dr. Morthee. Dr. D' Toro, submit a report, please.
Yes, thank you. We have a testing presentation by our testing coordinators, Mr. Liata and Ms. Glabacki. So, come on.
Hello. I could use the microphone on GW. So, good evening. Jennifer Glabacki, Principal of George Washington School and District Testing Coordinator. I'm here with Dominic Liata, who's, you've known his face to be up here before for district testing presentations in the past. I'm here to report with Dominic to some assessment data that we have for this year. It might look a little different than what we were used to from the past because, as you know, for the last two springs, we did not participate in the NJSLA assessment because it did not occur due to the COVID pandemic. So, what we are here to report to you tonight are some DLM testing results. DLM refers to the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment, which is for our students who do not participate in a standard, like our typical standards-based curriculum. They have more of an individualized program. And then I'm also going to share with you the Access for Ls Assessment results. The Access for Ls is an assessment that we give, or part of a consortium with other states. All of our students who are in the ESL program, kindergarten through 12th grade, participate in this assessment every year, and we use this information to determine programming and entrance and exit. And then, you know, then Dominic will do his piece, sharing what's going on at the high school in terms of ACT, SAT, and AP assessments and graduation rates. The one thing I do just want to remind everybody of is to take into some COVID considerations in terms of when the assessments did occur and recognizing that some of our students were hybrid, some of our students were remote, and there were definitely some impacts that we are not used to in how our assessment data is, has had come out. So, when we are reporting any student assessment data, we cannot report the specifics of student outcomes unless we have a cohort of at least 10 students to report on. So, when you can see our students who participated in the DLM, in third grade, we only had two students. Our largest cohort of students was in fourth grade, all the way up to 11th. No grade level was large enough to report on, but I will share with you this evening for ELI and mathematics across all 18 students, the percentage who are at or above grade level, at or above target, I'm sorry. So, the way that ratings work for DLM is students can come out as emerging in a skill, approaching, at target, or advanced. Eighty-three percent of our students across all of those grade levels that I previously showed you were at target or advanced. In mathematics, 78% of our students were at target or advanced as well. In science, I cannot report because there were only six students tested in that area in all of our science assessments. That usually only happens for fifth graders, eighth graders, and I believe it's 11th graders. Some intervention strategies and things that we have in place to support the students in that cohort during the pandemic, during our, you know, our remote and hybrid options last year, our students in the self-contained program did attend full day throughout the course of last year. So, they were in school every day, all day, receiving their education in that, in that way. As we continue to work together, teachers and the child study team, we are really looking closely at student IEP goals and, of course, continuing to meet their needs and adhering to the IEP process. And finally, one of the things that we really looked at now that we're all back was increasing ways for our students in our self-contained program to have more opportunities to be with our general education peers, whether it's in specials throughout the day or participating in morning meetings, going to other extracurricular experiences. When I look at the Access for Ls assessments that occurred, like I said, we did not do the access test in the 1920, 19, 2019, 2020 school year, but we did do it last year. So, I'm going to only report to you some of the information that I can share from last year. Lenape Meadows has our largest cohort of students, so you can see that 21 students were tested. I'm going to share some of that data for you for kindergarten and first through third graders, and then I'll show you a few more segments of student data. But as you can see again, the numbers were not 10 or more, so I can't get too much into specifics for you. Okay. So, on the access assessment, students take six different, actually four different subtests, and then it comes out in six different scores. They participate in a speaking section, a listening section, a reading, and a writing section. And when those scores are combined, we come out with an oral language score, a literacy score, and a comprehension score. As you can see, I am sharing with you the percentage of students who scored at a 4.5 or above in their proficiency. The reason I chose that point is because that is the score with which we determine they can exit our program. We use the overall score of a 4.5 or above to exit a child from the program. But I wanted you to see how our students measured up at Lenape Meadows in terms of their different skill areas, so I can then show you some of the interventions that we're putting in place this year. The one thing I do want to highlight is you can see for our kindergartners, their scores, rightfully so, are a little bit lower than our students in first through third grade, and that's just going to show and reflect their difference in their educational years here at Maua. So, I think that this is a celebration to show you that as our kids move from kindergarten to those higher grade levels, they are starting to show proficiencies and exit out of our program and have more opportunities in their classrooms with their peers. The other cohort of students that I am able to present to you tonight are our 17 kindergartners across the district. The way I shared this information with you this evening is here are the different ratings that students can get on the different subtests, so they can show us entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, or reaching on those subtests that I shared with you on the previous slide. This is important because, like I said, a 4.5 is going to put a student between the expanding and bridging range. That's what's exiting them from a program to say they are proficient in the language to be able to access the curriculum the way the rest of our students are. I did want to share this with you because when you look at where we are with, like, entering, those students are at a level one. They need the most help, and this is important because I can share with you on the next slide some of the interventions that we're putting in place. So, in the ESL program this year, you may have noticed that writing was an area that had some of our lowest percentage scores. They have decided to integrate a writing portfolio into the program this year that will, you know, we're expecting that that will boost writing outcomes for our students that are in the ESL program. One of the other things that we're doing are grouping our students according to proficiency level instead of according to their age and grade. That's why I showed you on that previous slide. If a student is in kindergarten and they're entering at a skill level as opposed to a student who's in second grade entering at a skill level of one, we want them to be together because they're going to have the same entry point rather than putting them with a student who's at a higher skill level even though they're in the same grade. So, that's another way. We're grouping our students according to proficiency. We are increasing training opportunities for our teachers in the PSYOP model. PSYOP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It's a method of delivery of instruction that's real good for all students, but especially our ESL population. And finally, at the secondary level, you'll see that our numbers of students in the ESL program are shrinking as we get up there, which is a testament to when they're coming into the programs that we're providing. But at that level, some of the things that we're noticing for our students is that they are coming in with a, an impact to their education where they may not have even had a schooling experience in a country that they might be coming from. So, we're really creating individualized programs for those kids here in Maua. I'll pass the mic over to Dominic. Does anyone have any questions about the access in ESL, the access assessment, or the DLM?
Could you just go back one or two slides? This one.
Yeah.
So, this one, in the previous slide, there was a writing category. Is that built into one of the column headings there?
Yes. So, the literacy category is a combined score of reading and writing, and the, that's the only one that has writing within it. So, I did combine it. So, that's where you can see, like, when you get to the higher levels of proficiency of five and a six, we have 0% at that level right now in kindergarten, but let's be honest, our kindergartners are learning how to read and write when they come in as well. So, it really, it does make sense when we're looking at the profiles of our students. Yes?
I think one slide before this one, I just noticed, if I understand correctly, in the grade one, grade three, there's that big a discrepancy between their listening skills and then the speaking skills, so that they're understanding and getting, but they're not, the speaking is then, so that's 10% at a level of fluency? Is that how to understand that?
Yes. So, exactly. So, our students are performing the 90th percentile for their reception of language and they're able to, yeah, and they're able to comprehend, but their expressive language is at that 10% mark.
Which is, which would be somewhat understandable, but it still seems like a larger gap than perhaps we would want that.
Yeah. And you know, that does kind of, when you think about, like, the process of writing, of expressing ourselves in writing, it kind of goes hand in hand, right?
Yeah.
The ability to speak.
And write.
Ties right into your ability to write. So, the ESL department is well aware of this, and it's tied into their goals this year.
Great. And how about for the speaking component? Is there, like, they're doing the writing portfolio and those other things. Is there an area that they're going to use or a strategy to address the speaking as well?
I'm sure that there is. You know, one of the things when I was just pushing into an ESL classroom the other day, prior to the student writing down their thoughts, they were doing a lot of oral retelling before doing that, but that's only a piece of it because that speaking and listening is also that conversation back and forth. So, we're talking about how we can add in more conversational structures to our classes so that we know that we're hitting that every single time. So, it's a, it's in conversation, and it's in planning, and it's on everybody's radar.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one, the only other thing I want to say is we did administer the Start Strong assessment over the last two years. The purpose of the Start Strong assessment was in replacement of the NJSLA, but not in a way that we are reporting on those scores, in a way that we're using the information to drive instruction. Okay? So, the Start Strong assessment did occur in our schools in language arts, math, and science. We did that assessment this year across our grade levels in September, and we're starting to receive that data now and use the information to make some instructional decisions this year. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The first slide I'll discuss tonight is the graduation rate for the last five years, 2017 to 2021. So, this is based on the cohort numbers, the students who started with that class of 21, 2021, who graduated. And the graduation rate last year was 97.9%. And that 97.9% graduation rate is determined by the cohort that started with that group, that group of 237 students that we finished with. Students who dropped out previous to the next new year factor into that rate by the New Jersey Smart calculation rate. But all 237 students who started with us in September, all 237 graduated. So, 100% graduation rate for the students who started with us at the beginning of the year. SATs, everyone knows and loves. So, the SAT is based on 1600, and there's a mathematics section. The frames in blue are the Maua High School students. The green is the New Jersey State average, and the purple is the national mean. So, for our mathematics score, you see that over the last three years, Maua High School, we've gone up 605, 603, and 611. And we are significantly above the state from last year, 611 to 530. The evidence-based reading and writing, again, our numbers improved over the last three years, 580, 592, 596. And the state, you know, over 116 points better than the state. The combined SAT score, 1185, 1196, we made 1,200 last year. So, it's 200 points higher than the state and significantly above the national means. Our SAT scores are really phenomenal. Remember that number 1207. Kind of, we're going to come back to it on the next slide. I want you to remember the number 1207. Now, colleges will accept, now this is the ACT scores, colleges will accept either an SAT or an ACT. ACT is a different test. It's for a different type of student. Our students seem to be doing better on the ACT. And the ACT tests four things, four factors. Tests mathematics, English, reading, and science. And how you determine the ACT score, the ACT is out of 36. 36 would be the equivalent to a 1,600 on the SAT. So, you average the four scores, and then you get your composite score. So, the red is Maua High School. Maua High School students are in the black. The state is in the green, and then national is in purple. So, if you look at our composite score of the four scores, the four sections, it's 28.5. Now, what we do for students before they submit their ACT, before they submit their test scores to their colleges, we want them to submit one. We only want students to take both SAT and the ACT because one test for the math-science student, they'll do better on the ACT because of that. Science section brings up the overall score. So, what we do, we have students take the tests, the SAT and ACT, we put it on a chart, and we compare which one's higher. So, this 20, this 28.5 composite score, okay, I put the ACT, is equivalent to a 1,350 SAT. 1,350. Now, if you remember, our average in the SAT is 1207. So, this test, the ACT, I think it's a better test overall. I think it's a better measurement because it touches on four different components that really highlight what we're doing in our building and what our, and how our kids are performing. And you see how significantly better we are just based on the composite, how they finish, than the national, the state, and, between the national and the state. But at the 1,350, it's a really, really powerful number. AP, this is the anomaly slide. So, look at the second column. We'll talk about the elephant right here, 78.3. Okay?
Yeah.
We go back two more years. There's the percentage of scores. Now, AP is out of five. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. A student gets a three, four, or five on an AP exam can earn college credit. So, last year, our students formed a 78.3%, got three or better, okay, on the AP. The last five years, going back 2017, 18. 2017, we were 90%. 2018 was 90%. 2019 was 91%. 2020 is 91.3%. And then we have this year. This number mirrors, mirrors exactly what's happening across the county. I'm president of the Bergen County Directors of Guidance, and we had one of our last meetings discussing this, how there were significant drops across the board. Now, part of that has to do with college board and the way they set the test up last year. We tested, I tested as the AP coordinator for seven weeks. Students were testing online. Students were tested in the building. We had problems with and across the board with college board with their platform, with students who were having trouble logging on. So, there was a lot of different things going to test within exactly what was revealed a little bit later, but we'd already started our instruction. But we had more students test last year than we ever had before. So, and one thing I want you to understand is that only sophomores, juniors, and seniors can take AP exams, okay? They're all, because they have to enroll in a course. Every student in Maua High School who's enrolled in an AP course, and we're one of the few schools in the county that does this, any student who is enrolled in an AP course has to take the exam. So, we have close to 35 to 40%, 35 to 40% of our students taking AP exams, which is real, which is pretty significant since it's a college-level course. And that really bodes well for us, bodes well for us when they go off to college. And here's our average scores by subject. We offer 24 different tests, and this is the average score from 2021, 2020, 2019. And the next slide. So, our numbers are still very respectable. Looking at this page, I mean, like we talked about, students get a three, four, or five, they get college credit. Every test on this page, they're getting college credit. Percentage of students who attended college last year, we're at 95.4%, which is consistent where we've been for the last few years. Our two-year college attendees were a little higher last year, about 11%. That was part of, partly due to the COVID effect. Students were unsure whether they want to go farther away, they want to stay a little closer, but our numbers are 95.4. And our last slide. These were, these are the universities and colleges where our students attended last year. Last year was the first year of Maua High School history. We had West Point, Anil Academy, the Emergent Marine Academy, Air Force, and...
Coast Guard.
Coast Guard. Thank you. So, I know we got all of them last year. I think the statistic, as we talk about, before we're talking about the numbers, this is a presentation talks about data, the numbers on the top of this page to me are the most powerful. This one right here. We had these two written. We have 105, 105 different universities or colleges that students attended, and there are 28 different states. Now, that number is significant, and it really resonates with me because that speaks volumes about what we're doing here in the district of Maua. That our students, when they leave Maua High School, one, they're feeling confident about what they've learned academically. Two, they're feeling confident about how they feel about themselves socially, that they're willing to branch out to go to North Carolina, to Rhode Island, to Pittsburgh, University of Washington, right, to Drexel. They're spread out all over the country. And I always ask students, we have an alumni return day in January, where we have alumni from the previous year that come back, and the first question I always ask them, are you prepared? Are you prepared for college? And nine out of 10 say absolutely, that college is actually easier. And that speaks to the volume, speaks to our teachers, our faculty, administration, our community, and setting our students up for success, and setting our students up to be able to travel and not have, don't have any qualms about going, hopping on a plane, and feeling confident to be successful. Any questions?
So... So, agri media and Bergen County Guidance Councilors.
Yes.
What was sort of the consensus on the AP scores? What happened? I mean, was it just the administrative part of it?
It was a lot of it. I mean, a lot of it was, was the way the setup, the test setup was. A lot of it was there were some gaps in what had happened the year before from an educational standpoint, and also the way that the college board at least the exam depended, gave students choices. Many students have never taken an online AP exam, so that was one of the issues that students faced. There's a lot of different things. The next year, we're going back to the normal test setup in class, in the building and on paper.
And what about the impact of COVID? I mean, obviously, students had fewer hours of instruction and it was virtual, so that had to have an effect.
Oh, without a doubt. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I just have a quick question. This is, not that since we have you, I'm just curious about the pathways program. I'm just curious as to, I mean, that started now, it's been a couple of years, so just started, curious to how that's been going at the high school. And I see, I mean, might be something to think about. Curious statistic to see how testing breaks down among the pathways. I'm just curious for a kind of longer-term research question, you know, that's something to think about, like, do we have, do we see certain patterns or trends among the pathways? So, if you could speak to that briefly.
Sure.
I know it's not related to testing.
No, no, sure. That, that has been one of the main missions and goals of our department, is to really get our students to start thinking about their careers, to start thinking about what they wanted to be on in high school. I always use myself as the prime example. When I graduated high school, I went to Western University, and I changed my major four times. I started out with a pharmacy major, then I was a business major, then a history major, and I finished with a degree in English. Now, if you know anything about the human brain, okay, there's one side of the brain that's math-science, and the other side of the brain that's English, okay? I started here and I finished over there. I had no clue, no clue what I wanted to do. So, one of the things we try to get students to see, and we do this through our Naviance program, we have them take career interest surveys, career profilers, to get them each year, they'll take a different assessment that will give them data to at least figure out what they want to do, but sometimes more importantly, what they don't want to do. If I had a tool or an assessment like that and it had a little bit more guidance, I wouldn't suspend my wheels for a semester or so trying to figure out organic chemistry. So, that's one of the things we are talking about as far as our focus from day one. We already met with our freshmen, and they started doing their, the first career profilers, and they started pointing in that direction. And that'll help us when we start to take their classes in January, to say, okay, before you sit down with your counselor, pick your eleventh, what did your service say? What are some things that are of interest, interest to you? And then as far as the data, we'll be able to track each student have, will have to put in a career pathway that they're interested in, but not locked in. It's just something for them to think about, and they'll be able to track that data. Once they apply to colleges, we can pull that data from Naviance and see the numbers.
Has there been a full year of the pathway? Because it probably started and then last year, right? So, I'm not, actually, now I'm thinking, there might not have been a full year for data collection.
Well, we haven't, I mean, again, the COVID kind of put a damper in our data and in our direction, so I think we kind of took a little bit of a step back. But we are, that is the direction we're going to be able to see and how those numbers kind of apply.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, just to amplify on a previous question. So, if I were in the engineering and technology pathway, is our expectation that those students, I mean, there's a lot of AP classes in that path, obviously, would our expectation be that those students might do better on AP tests because they've had a more focused schedule of courses? I'm not sure if that's an answer.
I, I don't know, I don't know if they do, I mean...
Or more reliably.
Our students do well on AP.
Right.
Because of, because of the foundation of all their classes.
Right, right.
So, I think that's part of it. So, you know, I think it'll lend itself to going in that STEAM pathway, engineering, if there's those types of kids, it'll get a little bit more of a, you know, another couple of pieces to the puzzle. another couple of pieces to the puzzle that it didn't have. But, you know, it's the foundation of our sound curriculum, starting with the math science, that really gets us to those, to the numbers that we usually hit every year.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. I actually do. I'll keep it brief. All activities are finishing up their seasons. We just want to congratulate all the athletes and the performers for the time and dedication that they put into being, obviously, a student, but also into their sports and into their performances. We know that that is a challenge, and we greatly appreciate their commitment to both. Couple points of celebration. Our girls varsity soccer team is continuing to the state tournament. They just became the 2021 Patriot Division Champions. Our cross-country team qualified and will continue, be continuing on the Bergen meet of champions at Darlington. Team's continuing into the state sectionals at Garrett Mountain. Our volleyball team is continuing to the state tournament. And our marching band competes this weekend in the Tournament of Bands in New Jersey State Championship at Cherokee High School in Marlton, New Jersey. So best of luck to all the teams, and congratulations for a great season to all of our athletes and performers. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dicker?
No report this evening.
Wonderful report, thank you. Dr. Sharon?
Yes, I have a brief report this evening. Mr. Gallo, can you just hit the lights again, please? About two years ago, we introduced the Twitter feed on our homepage. Felt like it was an appropriate time to really have a feel-good moment because there's a lot of great things happening in this district. So just a few highlights. So even if you don't have a Twitter account, you can scroll to the bottom of the homepage, and any of our tweets from our students, or administrators, or our school buildings that have the hashtag Mawa connects is populated here. So you can see, as you scroll, it's being updated by the minute. So you can see here, right now, for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, over at JK, they had a pinkout where students and staff wore the color pink. Students are working on tactile learning activities in Mrs. Genitasio's class over at JK. We have Officer Sinisi over at Lennepie Meadows, who spoke to students about Halloween safety tips. We have Mrs. Hartigan Miller, who's our library media specialist and a teacher over at the high school, along with Mr. Saputsky, a business teacher at the high school, who visited Ramp Hill Ridge to speak to students about what those pathways look like up at the high school when they do eventually attend. Mr. Calhoun at GW set up kids to play zombie tag for our phys ed class. And we spoke at last meeting about our Thunderbird Partnership Program. And we recently had a graduate from 2017. Her name is Ms. Calucci Rachel. She's currently an animator. And as a result of being a part of the partnership program, she shared with our animation class her experience and expertise as a storyboard artist currently. So that's some great stuff that's happening in our district that I think is worthy of celebrating. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President's report, don't have much, I just wanted to, took my thunder on all the great things happening with the sports. Friday night, of course, we'll be having the last home game over at, for the football team. And the marching band there as well. Thunderbird Cafe will be open again. Everyone's more than welcome to help out. Mr. Coughlin was there last week, I might ask. But I just want to thank Dominic and Ms. Kalachi for their presentation, just showing off the amazing things that are happening in this district education. Also in front of you is the Mawa High School Academic Overview, I believe was handed out for the open house as well. Just shows a lot of the amazing things happening, you know, the culmination of the K-12 experience in the high school. All the credit goes out to our administration, administrators, the buildings, principals, supervisors, and especially our staff, who make all this happen for our kids. And so thank you for everyone for that. And that is my report. Yeah, sure.
Anybody in the crowd who wants to take a look? Mr. Kozmarski, can I see that? A lot of the questions that were posed by the board members were specific to the academic overview of Mawa High School. On your way out, it's on the side desk over there, over to my left. You'll be able to, if you want, you can grab a catalog that was created by the high school to showcase all the different programs and experiences.
Excellent, thank you. All right, board committee reports. Mr. Gallo, tonight. Mr. Denise, I know you've got something.
Yeah?
Want to go first, or Mr. Gallo?
I just have a brief update. Since we last met, we've continued our land engineering reviews of our buildings. Tonight, we did George Washington, and two weeks, or a week ago, we did Ramp Hill Bridge. And on the 10th, we're going to do Lennepie Meadows and JK. And in December, we're going to wrap up with a district-wide review. So we're continuing that route.
Who else?
Johnny.
Policy has ten policies on tonight's agenda for a first reading. Policies sixteen forty-eight point thirteen. School employee vaccination requirements is a new mandated policy that became effective on October eighteenth, and requires all public school employees to be fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing at a minimum of one or two times per week, and as in accordance with Executive Order 253. Policy and regulation sixteen forty-eight point eleven. The road forward has been revised to include protocols for the COVID-19 vaccination and testing referenced in sixteen forty-eight point thirteen. The proposal shall include, but not limited to, a vaccination verification process, testing intervals, and testing confirmation procedures. Policies sixteen forty-eight point fourteen. Safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings. COVID-19 is a new mandated policy aimed at protecting staff members from COVID-19, specifically school nurses. The policy requires appendices where a school district will include their locally-developed protocols for staff members working in the healthcare setting in a school, such as a nurse's office. In addition, the superintendent is required to appoint a COVID-19 safety coordinator who will have responsibilities outlined in the policy. Policy twenty-four twenty-five. Emergency virtual or remote instruction program is a new mandated policy that permits a school district to implement a program of virtual or remote instruction in the event that the school district is required to close a school for more than three consecutive school days due to a declared state of emergency, declared health emergency, or directive by the appropriate health agency to institute a public health-related closure. A school district is required to submit their program of virtual remote learning and instruction to the New Jersey Department of Education for approval by October twenty-ninth. It's two days from now. The remaining policies is from our review of the nine thousand series, where there were only minor grammar or language changes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coughlin?
Okay. First of all, sorry. October is Italian-American Heritage Month. It was first celebrated in nineteen eighty-nine. It recognizes the contributions and achievements of Italian-Americans. Over twenty-six million Americans of Italian descent currently reside in the U.S., making up America's seventh-largest ethnic group. This one's for Lincoln. Tomorrow is National Chocolate Day. Did you know, based on data collected by candystore.com, New Jersey's favorite candy bar is the Kit Kat?
Really?
I would not have guessed that. Halloween's coming up on Sunday. The schools will be celebrating it on Friday, so please check with your schools for specifics. Native American Heritage Month is celebrated every November to honor the remarkable Native Americans who have contributed to improve the character of our nation. In nineteen ninety, President Bush approved a joint resolution recognizing the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. Election Day is coming up this Tuesday, please get out and vote. The Hindu Festival of Lights, Diwali, will be celebrated on November fourth and lasts for five days. Diwali symbolizes the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. Happy Diwali. Veterans Day is November eleventh, and is a tribute to military veterans who served in the U.S. Armed Forces. Not to be confused, Memorial Day, which honors those who die while in service. Veterans Day honors all military veterans, including those still with us. Please take the time with your children to discuss the importance of honoring our veterans, not just on November eleventh, but every day. Just a little PSA, daylight same time ends on November seventh, so knock those clocks back. And last, I wanted to end with an awareness month that's very near and dear to all of us in our district and me personally. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Excuse me. Every year since nineteen eighty-five, people around the world wear pink to raise awareness and to encourage women and men to self-examine. It's also a great opportunity to show your support for those that are fighting this awful disease. Excuse me. I wear pink tonight to support a woman who has had a remarkable impact on my child's life and those children in our district is now fighting this horrendous disease. She's probably not watching, but she knows who she is, and knows how much the Coughlin family and our entire district loves her. So over the next couple of days, wear a pink shirt, jacket, ribbon, t-shirt, whatever. Share your support and help raise awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Any other committee remarks or reports? Board number remarks, additional comments? Mr. Gallo?
Dennis stole part of my thunder when he mentioned the Thunderbird Partnership, but I recently came across a person who I've known for a number of years now, the executive director of MEVO, Violet Reed, was invited to come into our district by Justin Saputsky and talk to the community problem-solving team. And as many of you know, MEVO runs a farm at Camp Ba, but they've also been doing cleanups at Sag Hill for a number of years. The students were particularly intrigued by the Sag Hill cleanup project, and they're in the middle of a huge project to remove three hundred cubic yards of material and fifteen vehicles off the hill in a particularly treacherous area. So the students were very interested in like, how did this become a dumping ground? How can we stop the dumping? How are we going to, how would you organize a project of this magnitude receiving the permissions? This is also a project that is a partnership with the New Jersey Land Conservancy for a property that will eventually be turned over to the Lamonte Indian Tribe. So I just wanted to highlight our Thunderbird Partnership program going full steam in our buildings with a Mawa-based organization. And it's just a pitch for the project. They're looking for like seventy volunteers to help work on this site. And if you go to mevo.org and click on the volunteer tab, you can sign up to help. The next event will be on November thirteenth. If any of you feel strong and ready to carry a lot of junk out of the woods, you're ready to go.
I just saw, I was just looking up my phone, I think they're having one on October thirtieth as well. It might be a different site, but there's ample opportunity to sign up and help.
Yeah. So Thunderbird Partnership will steam ahead.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other board members with remarks? All right, so we're done, moving on, whole business. We have minutes. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one public work session actuated? Dr. Morthee, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco? Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kozmarski?
Yes.
Seventeen new business. Can I please get a motion to approve resolutions eighteen A through T? Ms. Sacco, seconded by Mr. Coughlin. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except in seventeen A, I will abstain from check number one zero four five zero five.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes, but I'm abstaining on check number one zero four 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 three.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kozmarski?
Yes.
Eighteen new business personnel. Can I please get a motion to approve resolutions eighteen A through T? Dr. Morthee, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes, and thanks again to all the volunteers.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kozmarski?
Yes.
All right, I'm making public questions more common. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Violet zero one six seven. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on education issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and remarks no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and position of the word. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Can I please get a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Meeting is now open to the public.
Good evening, Luke Theodore, one hour in place. I spoke with Dr. Totoro about this in the past, I just wanted to bring up the entire board. Mawa Schools is accepting quarantine recommendations from TMYSB, which is not going through what I see as the appropriate chain of command of how it should be done. Mawa Schools, according to the state COVID hub, close contact and forced quarantine should be done through the Board of Health, either Mawa Board of Health or Bergen County Board of Health. If, for example, this happened with my daughter through the schools, the school had listed her as a close contact, just going back to last year. We got a call from a contact tracer. It ended up that she wasn't even in school the day that it happened because she had broken her arm and she was at a Dodgers appointment. So the contact tracer very quickly remedied that situation, and she was able to attend school. What's happening now is because there are no contact tracers involved, there's no official word from an authority, you're taking the words of an amateur youth organization as to who is a close contact or is to be quarantined through the partnership that Dr. Totoro mentioned at last week's, or last couple of weeks ago's board meetings. So I'm wondering if there's any update on that, if the board was aware of that, and where that stands?
I could say that we became aware of it at the last meeting, prior to the last meeting. My questions at the time for Dr. Totoro and administration were, you know, from just a legal standpoint, and we reached out, had reached out to the attorney from a board perspective. He had, and the attorney was fine with the administration and the school district accepting that information. With regard to the other side of that equation for the sports boosters, and that's really an issue for the sports boosters. That's a question that, and I don't know if they have actual meetings or not, but that's really a matter for them, if they're contact tracing and providing that information.
They do, and it is posted on their website, so helps to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public with a speech?
Good evening, Danielle Ryan, twenty-two Riverview Terrace. Continuing on the point about the rec program. I'm a coach on rec soccer. I wasn't made aware of this partnership. I wasn't made aware of this partnership either. As a coach, I would think that would be something I should know. I know a fellow coach that, in order to march in Mawa Day, was asked to check for a negative COVID test from a kindergarten program because there was a contact or something the week before. Nowhere, when I signed up, would I be comfortable with checking, asking parents for their child's medical records and things of that sort. Being that I wasn't notified, I think that shows, and I know we're not allowed to directly speak to board members who wear multiple hats, but this shows that blurred line. On that, I would also like to point out or ask, do you have partnerships with CCD programs, you know, Hebrew schools within town? I would see that there should be partnerships there as well. I'm saying that in jest, I'm not saying that that I think you guys should do that, but if that's not already in place, again, this is showing that there's blurred lines. And that's my major issue, that I've already brought up. You told me that this is not the forum for that, that I should contact the rec department. I sent an email in response because four days after the meeting last, two weeks ago, on October 17th, the rec program reached out to, I don't know if it was all the parents or just the coaches, but I got an email finally talking about this partnership. The timing of that email, of course, being after it was brought up last meeting and everybody was upset, I emailed the president, and no response came through. That's my first point. Then, going back to last meeting, a couple of days ago, I was listening to the meeting again, just to get prepared for today on what I wanted to speak about. And as I felt back then, it was quite a mind-blowing, shocking statement was made that I would like to have addressed. And I'm sorry, I don't know how to say your last name.
Kuzmareski.
Mr. Kuzmareski. When father, he brought up randomly sending out the masks, if that would be something that we would be open to. And your response was, it doesn't matter. That the, no matter what's in those masks, it doesn't matter because there's a mandate. So the health and safety of our children is second to this mandate. If that was the case, if the masks came back, like, off the charts terrible, we would still just say, there's a mandate. I understand we would still have to follow the mandate, but we could, as other districts have done, send letters to the state. You said, oh, they won't, he won't even read them. That's how I feel when I come here. Nothing happens. I just get to talk and I get blank stares back. No answers are given. The father, the same father that brought up the testing of the masks, said, can the kids pull down their mask if they have the oxygen levels stating that their oxygen's low? Or do they have to go to the nurse? Blank stares. No response, just told, it's a mandate. That was the response that we got.
Okay, well, I'll address your point there, what I was saying when I said it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter to me. I said it doesn't matter to the state who you'd send these test results to. But let's go back to the question. Yeah, let's grab a bunch of random masks from a bunch of random kids and go test them. And what does that prove scientifically when there's no control, there's no study? None of us are scientists. Okay, but we're going to send it to a place, by the way, we'll send the results to a place that, you're right, they don't care. The mandate is the mandate from trend. That's what it is. And so, that's the answer. It's not saying, I don't care.
Exactly, exactly, but you said it doesn't matter.
Well, not to me, in the sense that it matters to me as an adult, as a parent of children. It doesn't matter to the people you're sending it to, because no question the efficacy of any testing protocol you went through. Okay, so all of a sudden, we're just sending masks out, and then again, I will also go back to say, testing masks is not really, it's not a thing of the Board of Education Administration. That's a matter for scientists, that's a matter for controlled study groups, that's a matter for anyone. And do those tests, and maybe those tests have already been done elsewhere, and the governor still has a mandate in place that we're going to follow. Period, end of story. Now, with regards to the lack of oxygen or things like that, I can't speak to that because that's a building issue. If a child is not feeling well, they should, yes, go to the nurse. And I'm sure the nurse has protocols to handle children who are not feeling well because of either mask issues or not feeling well in general. I don't know, but that's not really a question for the Board of Education.
Well, that's a question of the mask, and it didn't get, it didn't get what you just gave me. It's got no response. The oxygen, even the mask, you just said it doesn't matter, there's a mandate.
It's not a question that doesn't matter, it is a mandate. And the mandate is from an executive order from the governor of the state of New Jersey, not from the Board of Education.
We understand that. The thing is, if there, what you said, it doesn't matter. If there was evidence, as scientific as could possibly be.
If you have the most scientific evidence in the world, what are we to do about that mask mandate? Tell, honestly, tell the governor that we're just not going to follow it because...
No, it's not about not following it, it's about...
But that's your, that's your end result. That's what you're, that's what you're leading up to. Assuming for a second that you are correct and there is bacteria on these masks, tell me, tell me, tell me where to go from there.
So this is a...
Tell the governor, and what will the governor do? The governor will tell us there's an executive order in place, which you will follow, which every school district in the state of New Jersey is currently following. Period, end of story.
Period, end of story, I understand. That's not the problem. I'm not saying, I'm saying the mandate would still have to be followed.
Yes.
Other districts, Upper Saddle River, for instance, have at least wrote stating that they don't agree with this. And I understand, perhaps you guys agree with this, but if you had evidence, perhaps flawed, but evidence stating that there was very high problems with the masks, germs problems, we would, we wouldn't, for the safety and well-being of our students, even if it meant that they still had to wear a mask, we wouldn't voice that to the governor to explain to him that there's a problem with these masks. That's what I, and you're just going to keep saying the same thing, and I'm just saying the same thing. So that's what it's going to be.
As are you. So we've got his still, okay, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a public question?
So I just had a couple of questions.
Give your name.
Oh, excuse me?
Give your name.
My name is Tina, I am, I live on Barstow in Mawa. I just had a couple of questions also about the masks. The protocol, if a child is not feeling well or is getting ailments from the mask during school hours, for example, headache, how do we handle this? What is the protocol?
Along the lines of students having adverse reactions to the mask, that's something that we have not had, a large number of students having. And what I can tell you is, that's done on a case-by-case basis. So if there's an issue with a child who is exhibiting any sort of issues, whether it's mask-related or not, that's something that they would work directly with the school nurse and administration and see what would be the proper supports to put in place for that specific student.
Okay, so if a child is feeling headache due to the mask, they have to report to the nurse?
Anything that they're not able to manage today due to some sort of illness or symptom, they'll be sent to the nurse to get support.
And what does the nurse do after that, if the mask is causing headaches?
Again, that's something that would be on a case-by-case basis. I can't really talk through any... Excuse me?
Okay.
I can't really talk through any specific matter because that's specific to that student.
All right, well, my son has been coming home with headaches, and it's definitely due to the mask. I told him to tell his teacher, go down to the nurse, do something about it. He doesn't want to make a fuss, he doesn't want to be singled out, and I'm having a problem with that. So kids don't feel confident to even say something to the teachers. And I told him, why don't you just tell one of the teachers, you need a break from your mask? And he says when he does take a little break of a breath, he's always scolded, and like, he says, you know, I told him, I'm like, he knows when they ask nicely, like, what's going on? And he says, it depends. Sometimes I get yelled at, sometimes they're just like, you know, put your mask back on. So to me, I think the kid, the children, are even, not scared, but they're not confident enough to ask the teacher, go up to the teacher, and if they do pull down their mask to take a breath, they're recommended right away.
I struggle to make an all-encompassing statement on the entire district, so I just want to be cautious there.
Well, I've been asking around, it's not just one incident.
Let me, I'll give you the strategies to work through this situation. The strategy to work through this situation, I highly recommend that you reach out to the teacher, to give them an opportunity to share what they're doing, because there's a large number of teachers that I've seen take kids outside for mask breaks, have classroom, have class outside, and do all the different things to give students logical breaks, whether it's through PE class, recess, or teachers just giving them a break, because the teachers need a break too. Along the lines of that, if that does not work, then the logical next step would be working with the building principal. But that, those two steps would be the most productive, because unfortunately, in this type of forum, I'm not able to understand the scope of the situation and the supports that the teacher may have given already at the classroom level. So out of respect for all those parties, unfortunately, I can't really give you anything aside from that.
All right, I am going to reach out to the teachers, and to the principal, but what I do know is that I'm sending my son home, I mean, I'm sending him to school, fine and healthy, and then he's returning home with headaches and fatigued, and it's unacceptable. And he can't fight his battles because, you know what? He doesn't want to be singled out, and that's what a lot of children feel like. They don't want to be the one that is going to make a fuss. So do you see anything like this going on? Do you realize that's what's going on, that does go on?
Along the lines of the ability to sustain throughout the day with a mask, it's a long day.
Yes.
And that's why I share that across the district, all of the teachers, all of the administrators are looking for opportunities for, there to be opportunities for them to drop their mask and have a mask break. So I'm not going to sit up here and say that it's easy to go through the entire day masked. That's why everyone's committed to looking for opportunities to give that mask break and have that opportunity to be outside. But what I also can say with that is that we have a large number of students who are successfully navigating the day, and it's not something that's a systemic issue that people are struggling to maintain the day and getting symptoms that you described.
Yeah, but some might not be reported.
Unfortunately, there's nothing I can say that, because that's not something that we can quantify in a week. We have an incident report or anything, so whether the number's high or low, there's nothing we can really go from, from that. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to close the meeting in public. Ms. Conoco, seconded by Dr. Morthe. At this time, I'm going to move to executive session. There will be no action taken when we come out. Thank you very much. Please get a motion to go over the executive for this session. Dr. Morthe, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Martinez, thank you very much. End of meeting for those participating, please zoom. Thank you.